Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting from Monday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. City Manager, you should call the roll, please.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Eton. Mayor Rowe.
Here. And Councilmember Eton indicated that he would not be able to be here this evening. Welcome to everybody who's here in the audience or guests. We should also introduce our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end of the table, and City Manager Trudgen did the roll call. He's on my left at the other end of the table. We'll introduce other folks as they participate in the meeting. We would remind folks, if they have a cellphone, to be sure to silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. And if you do need any materials for the meeting, reference to the agenda or anything like that, we do have extra copies of the agenda on the table in the back of the room, and a full, complete set of the meeting materials in a binder on the same table that's available to be referred to by the public. With that, we'll ask folks to stand if you're able for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I should note, this is a work session this evening, so we have a fairly light agenda. So next on our agenda is actually approval of the agenda. I'm gonna presume, from a staff perspective, there aren't any changes this evening.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
And likewise, from a council perspective, no changes.
No changes.
Let me just note for the folks in the control room, we're getting a lot of, we can hear really well over the PA here in the room, it's a little loud. Anyway, with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, second.
It's removed by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. I'm sorry. You were gone. Any discussion on that motion, hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously four to zero. We have our agenda this evening. Next is an opportunity for general public comment. This is a chance for members of the public to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We do provide an opportunity for public comment on agenda items as they come up during our meetings, but we do also provide this opportunity at the start of each meeting for members of the public to speak on items that are either related to city business or of interest to people in the community, but aren't on tonight's agenda. It doesn't appear that we have anybody from the public this evening. I believe everybody in the room is either staff or presenters, so we'll presume there's no public comment at this time, but did want to note for folks watching at home that that opportunity is available at each of our council meetings. That brings us then to our first item on the agenda other than those items, which is recognitions and donations, and we have a recognition associated with being awarded for a, for our exciting Ramsey County Ditch Four construction project. I was trying to say it as exciting as I could, but I understand, I understand. We have Ryan Johnson. Sorry, I'm just blanking on the title.
Environmental manager.
Environmental manager with us this evening. I apologize for that. Mr. Johnson.
All right. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for the opportunity, and yes, we are talking soils, so need I say more? Exciting as it is. But just to give you a brief overview, we've been working on this project with Alliant Engineering, Ramsey County, Ramsey, Washington Recycling and Energy, and we also got to include some Roseville staff and a whole bunch of volunteers. So it's been a really fun project. It's been kind of a nice opportunity to mentor a lot of younger geotechnical professionals, engineers, scientists, basically just on construction soils and what we can do to amend them after the fact, which is what this project was all about. But the project is fascinating just because of the soil scientist that's involved behind this from Alliant Engineering, Dave Bauer. He's a fascinating individual, and he came up with this nine thousand dollar project, so three thousand dollars a year, and came in on budget, so I was really excited about that. But yeah, basically, the project was looking at, you know, taking these construction soils, improving infiltration, improving the vegetation, just kind of resiliency to drought. And the big component that we like, that we also got Ramsey County and the Recycling and Energy Center for was the compost that was used for this project and that'll continue to get used for the project is all donated by the Energy Center. Basically, all the food scraps that are dropped off at, whether it's our site or in any of the Ramsey County sites, is used on this site. So it's really kind of a nice way to reuse the product that they're already trying to find additional sources to use up in the public. So, and with our sustainability goals, the compost actually helps with sequestering some more of the carbon and, carbon in the air. So it's a very fun project, and our construction soils look like this. They're compacted, they run over, you know, a lot of things happen on them, very unkind when you try to get something to grow in it. And when you start looking at it, like taking cores, you know, it looks just like it does when we were doing the work itself. It's, you know, not a lot of anything in there that can grow, and hence the picture here itself. This is one of the control areas, so this is what it looks like to date. Might have a little bit more on it, but our construction soils, again, we try to get something to grow on them. It's very low in organic matter, we get a lot of runoff, there really isn't a lot of anything going on below the surface as it's shown here. So what you do is you have Dave Bauer, he is the jolly fellow on the left of the screen there. He does love what he does, does love what he do, something like that, he loves it. But it's like, again, it's like this was a great opportunity to get a lot of younger professionals out on a site just to kind of see what this simple application can do. So compost is top dressed over our existing roach control blanket. In October, the freeze-thaw cycle really kind of helps build this into the soil, and once it's done, this is what the soil looks like in the areas that were top dressed. You know, it was that really tan color earlier that really didn't have a lot of structure, really bad porosity, didn't want to hold any water, everything ran off. Now we have good structure, better structure, I should say, and, you know, grant plants are growing a lot better, the plants that are growing here, you know, are in one of the test areas, so we get a lot more growth, we get more water getting infiltrated available for the plants, works as a slow-release fertilizer at the same time, and I would be remiss if I didn't put in the amuse-a-meter on the right, which, if you talk to Dave, he would use the amuse-a-meter thirty to forty times in the conversation, because he, he just loves it. So I included it on there because it's just a fun, fun word, and this is just one of the tests that they do basically to find out our soil is improving for infiltration. But, so, thanks to the American Council of Engineering Companies, the Minnesota Chapter, and everyone else on the screen, this is the award that we got. Ms. Lowery and I got to go to the awards banquet, which was a lot of fun, and we got to see a lot of other projects. And again, it's like we are going up against hundred million dollar bridge projects, cloverleaf projects, I mean, and it's like, they call our project out at nine thousand dollars amongst all the other ones, and it got a couple heads to perk up. So, thanks to, you know, all of you for letting me do what I do here, and this being one of them, and of course, Mr. Freihammer back there for letting me work on these types of projects and, you know, try to build a little bit more into our stormwater side of things, and also this adds into sustainability, so. With that, that's the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to talk further. We got soils here on the topic, so.
Yeah. Anybody have thoughts or questions?
Just thoughts. It was really fun to read it, because I hadn't done anything with soils since back in college, which was a long time ago, and I had taken a soils class. So this was a nice little refresher about, yes, what happens to soils when you disturb them, how hard it is to re, you know, replace the structure and all that, and so it was kind of an interesting thing for me to read how you're working with that and bringing the structure of the soil back, because once you dry that stuff over and all that, it's pretty much destroyed for other plant life for quite some time, not permanently, but for quite some time, because all the little worms and things have to get the porosity, of course, nature back in the soil.
Exactly.
I just thought it was a great project, and what a good use of our money to spend nine thousand and went out on a million-dollar bridge project. Well done.
Thank you. Thoughts and feedback, Councilmember Strawn?
Yes, thank you for sharing this. Again, really fun to see, kind of, I was like, wait, what is this? You know, I started reading, I was like, wait, wait. So I really appreciate that. I would assume that this is someone in a learning phase. Are we, are we gonna be a test, you know, hold that up as an example for others? Is this something that's been done elsewhere, and this was just something we thought we'd try here at home, or is this, you know, is this a best practice, or is this just kind of like, learning as we go in this situation?
It's a little bit newer. Not a lot of other places have really grasped onto it in this way. It's, this is a common problem with a lot of the other projects around the metro, a lot of the other construction companies, you know, it's like you go through, you disturb it, you set the soil back to, you know, day one after you, you know, replace it all like this. So no, it's like, we've given this soils presentation on the front end of this, you know, five, six times at different, you know, whether it's conferences, organizations, talking about the same thing. There's been a few studies done, Ohio and a couple other ones that are really looking at kind of the carbon sequestration part, where, you know, if we're laying this compost down, you know, what's its ability to actually pull carbon from the air? So there's a lot of that study, so we're kind of taking that along with, you know, how can we apply it to construction sites in a cost-effective way? I mean, because what we did here is, it's very low-tech, we're, you know, kind of just letting, you know, Mother Nature do a lot of the work for us, we top dress it, it builds it into the soil, which, you know, we usually have to go through and till, and, you know, there's a lot of additional costs and just labor that goes into it. So we are learning a little as we go, we are kind of adding on to what other people have done. But yeah, there's actually been a decent amount of interest that, you know, we even get calls from other cities on, you know, what we're doing here, how it's working. But yeah, again, the big thing is like, they're always just kind of amazed on how you do this after the fact, and the actual cost to do this is relatively cheap. So it's been kind of a great way for us to be kind of on the front edge of just how others can do this, too.
Just a follow-up question, I was curious to know what the next phase is as you move forward to twenty twenty-six, so what happens now?
What we'll do is we're gonna continue working down that Ramsey County Ditch Four corridor. We've only gone basically three hundred, four hundred feet, something like that, so we're just gonna continue down the path. I think pretty much this year, we're down past that first ninety as you're coming off of Terrace, so we're gonna continue down, hopefully get all the way to County Road C this year, if not this year, it would be, you know, in the next few years. But it's, yeah, we're gonna continue it all the way to the end, we'll have some really good data all the way from Terrace, starting in, you know, twenty twenty-one all the way to County Road C and, you know, maybe twenty twenty-six. So we'll have years of data, and we'll be able to see what we can do with it on other sites in Roseville.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes, thank you, this is, I actually find it fascinating, and I'd like you to speak a little bit more about the vegetation side of this, how you picked the plants, and were they planted or were they seeds?
Sure. So in this case, we went with a native, like a short grass prairie. One, you know, it's, it's really nice for habitat for, you know, we're a pollinators community, so getting some of the short grass prairie back in there, one, will help with that a lot, two, we get a lot of roach control from it, because there's a lot of root structure below all those plants, and maintenance will be a little bit less, and, you know, it's like, we have some steeper slopes here, so to actually have turf grass and have to mow it would be really difficult, and at the same point in time, to attempt to mow it would just likely send a mower down, down the side and cause other problems, so. So yeah, it's like, the benefits of adding the native vegetation going in there really outweighed just, you know, wanting to put turf, so it's, yeah, it's like, with all that, it's like, we'll, we'll really hopefully see a little bit of a water quality improvement, because the plants, the root structures keep everything together, they help slow that water down, everything flows obviously to the bottom, to the swale, and then goes just into oasis, just on the other side of Terrace. So, yeah, the plant, from my side of it, the plant, the seeding to get it to this point, you know, was kind of a no-brainer for me, so, just because of all the benefits that we get out of it.
So you just use actual seed and not actual plants?
Yep, so yeah, for this, we just did.
That's a lot easier to do than.
It is, so yeah, it's like, with this area, seeding it all worked out really well. Yeah, to plant it, we obviously would see a lot faster growth, we'd get a lot more, you know, just kind of that initial, ooh, look, all the pretty plants. This does take a few years to get going, but we do have it on a management cycle now where, you know, every month, every quarter, we'll have a professional contractor out there looking for the things that need to be looked for in this type of, you know, restoration.
Excellent, and then I assume that any invasive species would be taken out if they tried to take over before these plants become mature?
Yep, yeah, so it's very similar, it's like we have something like a Corpus Christi, which, if you drive by Corpus Christi on Fairview and B, are, this site should look similar to that once it gets established. And then, yeah, it's like, the management company is looking for, you know, kind of those annual weeds, you know, last year and this year, then you start looking for a lot of those perennial ones like Canada thistle and everything that are gonna be coming up, you know, probably this year. So yeah, they're very attuned to, you know, what should be coming up and what weeds come up at the same point, so they are, they're a good company, so they'll make sure that looks really nice.
Wonderful, thank you.
And just to kind of add on to what Councilmember Strawn was asking about, I think I was, I was gonna ask, you know, when, when does this become part of our specs for all of our projects to make sure that that step is part of it, but probably a little more research needs to be done, a little more data needs to be in hand before we get to that point, but I think it makes sense to, to start to think about that, you know, as a, as a requirement in the specs for our future projects.
Indeed, I agree.
Great. All right, well.
I would just love to add, if there was a way that the knowledge that those folks come out and they tell you about the Canada thistle or whatever, it would be so nice if maybe that could be shared on our website for just random people who are trying to do any of our residents, who might be trying to do some more native, you know, if they had a plant identification, it's always hard to know when you look at a natural front yard, but not everyone will have someone help them cultivate that, so.
Well, and for that matter, I don't know, do we don't, we don't have anything on, on our website about, like, who are resources for doing native plantings in your home, on your home property and things like that?
Yeah, we do have some, we have, we're going through the website now as we go into the, with the new layout, and one of the things is to kind of clean up, we do have some resources for people doing, you know, restoration work, some companies, they also usually do some maintenance side of things, too, so usually they have a pretty broad spectrum of what they do. But yeah, so it's like, it is on there, but it's like, we definitely need to rearrange it, because yeah, it's like, it's, it's a couple pages down, once you get to the, you know, Public Works page, and then kind of go through that.
And it'd be a great focus for a future quarterly or.
For one of our newsletters?
Newsletters, yeah.
Can I always do a tour? And take you out there and point at stuff?
Maybe that'd be, that'd be another award program to think about, you know, in addition to some of our other awards that we do for residents and businesses, is something to do with native plantings or that kind of thing, too. And we may already have that on the list of things to look at, but worth, worth also considering. All right. Thank you again, congratulations to everybody involved, we appreciate all those partners participating as well, and hopefully, you know, Ramsey and Washington County can generate enough food scrap compost to support all of these top dressing projects that we're gonna be doing in the future here. Thank you again, and with that, I think that brings us then to our business items this evening. Our first business item is related to one we had a couple, a few weeks ago, which was the Dale Street four-to-three conversion, which is actually happening this year. This is discussing another opportunity in the city of Roseville, and I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Jesse Freihammer, to make introductions of Ramsey County folks who are here this evening to talk about County Road C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we have Joey Lundquist, Project Manager with Ramsey County, and Alyssa Johnson with SRF, to discuss the County Road C project. This is currently scheduled in twenty twenty-six, but as the mayor mentioned, similar, similar style project, looking at a four-to-three lane conversion. But with that, I'll turn it over to Alyssa and Joey and to go through the presentation.
Welcome.
I'm Joey Lundquist, and this is Alyssa. So Ramsey County is leading the project that will convert County Road C from Lexington Avenue to Little Canada Road into a four-to-three lane conversion. We're looking at pavement rehab, additional, we're upgrading the ADA and pedestrian facilities, signal modifications at Rice Street and Lexington, an intersection, we're, we're looking at Victoria Street and County Road C to see what can be done there for an intersection. It isn't part of the project, but we're looking at it and working with BNSF regarding how close the railroad is. We're also doing a bridge study and preparing plans for, to replace the, the bridge over the railroad just west of Victoria, that will also not be constructed with the project, but you kind of need to get the plans going in order to get the funding, so we're hoping it shortly behind the, the project.
So currently, the existing conditions out there, these are just a few pictures, but the pavement is in poor condition, there's been milliner overlays in the past, but at this point, it might have been surface level milliner overlays, two or three inches, so I think we'll look to see how to better that in specific areas along the corridor. And right now, there's lack of adequate hike and bed, pedestrian and bike accommodations. Right now, I believe there's a trail or sidewalk on one side of the road the entire way. We may look at providing additional walker sidewalk, walk or trail on the other side, as well as making sure, that bottom picture, you can see a, a pad crossing, but there's no, like, pad ramp or anything on the other side, so we would look at making sure that everything is up to par there. And then, this next graphic kind of shows the current pedestrian crossings along the corridor, starting at Lexington on that top graphic there, and there's red circles along the areas where we have current pedestrian crossings. And we'll talk later about the, kind of the public outreach and, and studies that we're gonna be doing, but essentially, we want to see if these are serving the people currently in these locations, or if we want to potentially remove one or relocate one. So right now, we have our next open house in May, we'll talk about that, but we'll really be kind of zooming in and seeing where people frequent the most, and then see if we want to kind of change up what we have already circled.
Were those the proposed ones on the bottom?
No, I'm sorry, it was broken up into.
Yeah, it was like, one stretch road over another stretch road.
Yeah, it's a long corridor.
So, so some of the things we're doing with the project include upgrading the pavement surface, evaluating utilities, and upgrading pedestrian facilities and crossings, and we're trying to also engage with businesses, schools, and housing to see if there are needs that are being met.
So right now, just a status update on the project so far, we've collected survey along the corridor, initiated utility coordination with a go-for-stable call, we have scheduled borings for late April, and then we identified an existing and a proposed typical section that I'll show you in a second, and then, like I showed you previously, we identified all of the existing trails and walks. So here is a couple pictures of our typical sections. Top one is the existing typical section, you can see there's just the one side with a sidewalk, and then we have four lanes on the corridor. It's a narrower cor, narrower corridor, ten-foot lanes, if you can see that text in the, in the center lanes, and then only twelve-foot lanes on the outside, so we kind of had to see what we were able to fit. So that bottom typical section shows a continuous center-left turn lane, that's a twelve-foot turn lane, and then the travel lanes are eleven feet, leaving only five feet for a shoulder, and at this point, we're calling it a shoulder, but we'll kind of see if that will help with bike accommodations as well. And then you'll notice that that bottom one, there's a trail on that, it would be technically the north side, and right now, with, working with the city, we're putting in a proposed trail from Western Avenue to Rice Street, kind of a busier area on the corridor, so it would serve a lot of residents in that area. And again, we talked about the bridge being part of this project, but right now, it's just a restriping project, so same situation, we have the twelve-foot lanes on the, on the top existing typical section, and then that proposed typical section on the bottom will actually leave with nine-foot shoulders, just for the restriping of it for now. And the sidewalks would remain the same, so there's opportunity in the future with the bridge project to maybe change that, but for right now, it's just kind of a minimal effort.
And is there a sidewalk on both sides of the bridge?
Right now, there is.
I mean, it doesn't, I think on the south side, it doesn't connect to anything, but okay, I was, I was thinking, as I drive that, I never have noticed anybody walking on, on actually either side, but.
And right now, it's a substandard tra, sidewalk width for the future bridge, the future bridge will probably be more like eight or ten feet.
Well, exactly, the lanes are right up to the edge of the sidewalk, so there's nowhere for any, I mean, it's like, everybody's all in close proximity there, and where do you put the snow?
Yep, exactly.
Other than on the railroad tracks down below.
And then we just talked about a, a little bit of the traffic conditions in here, so why do we go from a four-to-three lane conversion? Well, the study, Ramsey County actually did a study on a bunch of different areas, and that highlighted sixteen thousand ADT is really the, kind of the goal or the maximum, I would say. So County Road C, you'll see there's around the sixty, six, sixty-six hundred range, which leaves this corridor a good candidate for doing a, a three-to-four lane conversion. It really does slow traffic down, it, it avoids, I don't know, driver confusion and speeding, and it helps people take lefts out of the side streets, because they don't have to cross over too many lanes of traffic. So this is just a little bit of the traffic background, specifically at Victoria Street, but along the whole corridor in the city, it's around the six thousand ADT range. And then the second graphic shows the pad and bike crash locations. So you can see there's a few bicycle crashes and pad crashes in this corridor, so it's really our goal to, you know, make those zero. So really helping with the four-to-three lane conversion, too, helps the pedestrians cross less amount of lanes as well. There's also opportunities on those side street crossings by providing like a small median on the inside, where it'd be more of like a refuge or something, like a little island for people to stop and maybe wait for traffic if vehicles weren't paying attention, but there's opportunities to provide more signing, that kind of step to help with minimizing any kind of crashes along the area. And then this was just talking a little bit more about the four-to-three lane conversion. You can see highlighted in blue in that graphic, that was Dale Street just reconstructed, was it last year it was reconstructed?
It'll be this, it'll be this summer.
This summer, sorry. This summer, so you'll see it this summer as a example, so again, it will reduce the vehicle speed, safer street crossings, improve the flow of people, and then the bicycle safety by providing that shoulder width on the side as well.
And our schedule, we're presently in preliminary design, which means we're looking at all of the data and trying to come up with the best project, and, and developing construction limits. So as we put in a, the, if we're gonna put in a new trail on the north side of the road, we're gonna have to look at how that affects the driveways and the yards, and come up with a plan for, to, to develop construction limits that would tell us how much right-of-way we need. And then final design would be next year, we'll do the right-of-way process next year, get all of the permits we need for the project, and develop a cooperative agreement with the cities, and then construction is planned for two years from now. So we're intending to have our first open house in May, we wanted, we have met with Little Canada once, and, I mean, we've been working with this, both cities, and we're meeting with you tonight, and then wanted to get some, any input you have that might help. That might help us along with public engagement and um. Anything that we should be looking at on the project that we aren't already looking at. Um, we plan to have an open house about every four to six months. Um, up to five open houses before we go to construction. And we have a project website and we're planning to do some pop up events. Somewhere along the corridor that has um. Potentially some economic or ethnic or car free households potentially, but. Find a few places where we can sit and just visit with people, maybe Central Park.
Yeah, I would definitely say the parks are good, good opportunities.
Catch a lot of people.
Acorn Park is right in the uh in the west, excuse me, east end of the Roseville part of the corridor and and I know. Um, across the summer, we do on Wednesday evenings each week a discover your parks event at different parks around the city, and so you may wanna find out when. Parks in the corridor have their events, cause you can probably coordinate with the Parks Rec folks here to to have a table or something like that, to do a lot of interaction, I know. Uh, having been at the one at Acorn Park a couple of years ago or a year ago or whenever it was, um, a lot of people from, for instance, the Rosedale Estates Apartments. As well as those fairly highly populated residential neighborhoods just to the north of the park. Who have a lot of crossing issues, uh, they were there, so I'm, those would be your your prime people to probably visit with as part of the the engagement for this project. Among others, obviously.
Good, good idea, thank you.
There's Joey's contact information. Any questions?
Questions, feedback, uh, Councilmember Strong.
Uh, thank you, this is exciting and uh it's fun to hear your presentation in relation. When I look at some of the materials we have, I don't see the trails coming off the ball fields heading toward County Road C. So from the Central Park ball fields between Victoria and Dale Street. Um, there are there are paths that head north into the neighborhoods. And for exen- exa- example, it's contagious, at uh Oak Crest and Fisk. There is a little inlet that comes into the neighborhood. And I often have taken that, um, having children, friends who live just on the other side of sea at Terrace. And it's treacherous, so there's no, um, again, like Dale Street, that's at um. Very high on one end, so people can't see and you're and it goes downhill pretty fast. So I don't know if there's any consideration to leveling C at all, but that I know that the four to three conversion does help. But I would suggest or recommend that there be a crossing between Fisk and Avon to Terrace. To access the neighborhood and the neighborhoods north of there to get them into Central Park, because. There are the pathways and everything there already, but there's no, i- it's really, it's pretty, it's pretty rough to us. To cross there even as an adult and with kids, you have to go into the lanes of traffic. Um, and it's not a straight, it's not an intersection, so if there is something south on the south end, if there is a pathway. But a crosswalk over to Terrace, I think that would be, that would really be a way for all those folks on the north side of sea. To be able to safely get their kids across and into the Central Park area.
Other questions, feedback? Councilmember Schroder.
Uh, could you talk a little bit on one of your slides, you talked about evaluating utilities? What exactly does that mean?
Mostly we need to find out where they are, cause we may have to move some of them for construction, especially for this. Any new sidewalks or pad ramps, they're often at the corners.
And so this will affect a lot pe- the people's properties along the one way possibly then?
Um, where we're, where we're, I mean, I. Where we're touching any uh sidewalks or things, we're we're probably gonna end up adjusting driveways. Cause the driveways will have to meet standards and um you you. Often go up into the driveway a little ways to tie in. So between between the sidewalks and the driveways and things like that, we're we're potentially into utilities.
So when do you think um the utility um evaluating that would be done?
We we start now, we try to have a really good feel for it before construction limits. Cause it can affect the construction limits.
And more so once you do that, that information will be put on the website or somehow or?
Um, it's in the plans, I I, it can be public knowledge, if somebody wants to see it, they can see it. Um, it generally is just in the plans and useful for us knowing what needs to move. During construction or before construction.
Okay.
Like there's gas lines on the south side of the road, there's a big Excel. Uh, transmission line over the top.
There's a lot of, that's why.
We're we're actually working with both Excel and BNSF.
It seems like it'd be a big project, and that's why.
The power line is right over the top of the bridge, we're gonna have to uh get them to try to do something. Um, to construct the bridge, cause they'll have to, we'll be working right under the bridge.
Oh, absolutely.
Under the power lines.
I just have another question, Mr. Farhan, are you able to confirm um what part of somebody's front yard is technically ours as he's been just?
So I know the county has d- done a survey on the whole corridor, um, I know on the 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 one chunk of trail that we're at least prioritizing from Western to Rice. Um, I think we generally have about fifteen feet behind the curb for right away, um, that varies, but I do know there's at least one or two parcels that. For whatever reason, there's less right away in a few few key spots, so that's something that will will affect the right away process as the county develops that later in the year. But generally, it's between twelve and fifteen feet.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for reminding me when where that section was that the north side pathway is being looked at. Thinking that is exactly where, you know, there's a lot of need for it, but the fortunate thing in in most of that corridor on the north side is that most of the driveways access the side streets. Rather than C, so that helps as far as driveway issues, at least in that section.
Yeah, so the pathway master plan does speak to pathways on both sides, um, at least in Roseville, that that would be a very long corridor, be very expensive. So that's why we did prioritize the Western to to Rice um corridor, because it's in front of Acorn Park. All those north south streets are very long, there's no sidewalks on them, but we know people wanna get to the park and. If we can get a corridor on the north side there, it should make the crossings as as Alyssa mentioned. We can at least follow them to those crossings instead of just randomly crossing um at at the end of every block, so hopefully that corridor uh works out. Certainly, we can look at the rest of the corridor, but costs go up, uh, some of the other locations, there's a lot more impacts, um, so a lot more study would need to go into that, but. Um, at least we're trying to prioritize the 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 highest spot, we think.
Right, and and definitely, I think between uh Victoria and um. Dale Street, like Councilmember Strong was saying, some of the access crossing in that area, because right now it's, it is that that curve. You know, and it's uh forty miles an hour and four lanes, it's really a challenge for people, not good sightlines. So that's one to look at closely, and I'm sure uh any feedback you'll get, we'll we'll talk about that as well, and then. Um, we do have just to the, just to the east of Lexington here, we do have that crossing, that pseudo crossing at Oxford. Which I know the railroad has tried to block off the ability to cross the tracks into Central Park. Um, I'm, I've seen people using it recently on my way to council meetings, so I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's it's totally effective, I'm not. I'm not sure what they're doing once they get to the south side, but maybe that's a place where if people are really insistent upon crossing there, maybe we provide a convenient way to then move to. The place where you're supposed to cross the tracks over Lexington or something like that, maybe a short stretch of pathway might make sense there to to try to dissuade the uh. The random track crossings, but um, uh, just a thought as well. Other thoughts, feedback, questions? Alright, well, we look forward to all the engagement process and and to the plans as they come forward and, uh, so it doesn't sound like the. Pavement surface on the bridge would be changed, it would just be restripped, because certainly the bridge pavement also.
I believe there's, there's a little bit of rehab that's gonna go on with the project, I think we're talking about it. Or or the county is planning to do some rehab, I'm not sure if it's with the project or outside of the project, but we're talking about. Something to get us to the rebuild.
Yeah, it's definitely appearing to be more patches than original pavement on the branch that sometimes, so. Alright, well, uh, anything else from council members? Alright, thank you again for being here, and like I said, look forward to the next stages of the process.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, continuing with the uh the presentation, uh, this is a little more in maybe into the decision making as well. Uh, but we have uh an opportunity to hear more about the uh. Process of looking at C owned recycling carts, and I'll turn it back over to our public work staff to bring this topic before us again.
Alright, I will turn this over to Ryan, since this is uh much more up his alley and he is much more informed on this than I, so uh with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Alright, thank you all. So, we've been working with Ramsey County and uh Fourth Environmental, so thank you for, to Ramsey County for allowing us to work with Fourth Environmental again. And uh what we're looking at is um releasing an RFQ res- re- request for quotes. Um, potentially this Friday, if council is okay with it. Um, basically what we're looking for is just information on what it would actually cost to get carts in the city. It's, we talked about this at our last couple RFPs for our bigger recycling um for all of the city. And both times, uh, city owned carts was interesting, uh, but just didn't seem like the right time, given. Um, you know, we were going through revenue share, we were pulling out a revenue share, um, Eureka had their carts out. And, you know, in two thousand seventeen, we had four respondents, um, which was good, cause we got kind of a nice cross section of uh. Just different pricing, uh, twenty twenty one, when we did it last, we had two respondents. Um, and one of the issues that kind of came up when I talked to everyone that was involved, cause we had two respondents, but we had. Um, four, if not five, might have been five, that came to the that the mandatory pre-construction meeting. Um, or the pre-RFP meeting. Um, and one of the issues that they brought up was just, it's harder for them to come up with a good number for, you know, giving us. Um, you know, recycling in Roseville when it's somebody else's carts that isn't owned by the city. Because then they have to adjust by, you know, it's like they have to plan on bringing out their own carts or. You know, are they expecting the city to purchase carts and put them out, um, so it was just, you know, just kinda the additional logistics that come with. You know, contractor own carts in the city, you know, it's very easy right now for Eureka to provide a quote, because. They're, they're out there, they've been out there since two thousand fourteen, um, so you amortize the cost of those carts over all those years. Um, you know, it's like their cart should be paid for by now, um, so it kinda gives uh Eureka a nice handhold just to be able to. Give us a good price for contractor own carts out there, means we don't have to do anything else. Um, they manage them all, they uh they're already out there, so, um, you know, it's like. One of the hopes out of this is if we do have our carts out there or city owned carts, then. Hopefully it opens it up where we can get more respondents again, um, obviously nothing's guaranteed. Um, because there are other factors, obviously, in the RFP, everything from, um, you know, just kind of our DEI section, we have recycling in parks. Um, Roseville is a pretty easy place to actually pick up, um, because we don't have alleys, it's all curbside. Um, so it's like, when it comes to the actual servicing, contractors can get through here pretty quick. And, um, so this ends up being just one of the options that we'd like to look at. And, you know, with the RFQ, this is again, just kind of gathering some data, there's nothing that would come up. Um, out of the RFQ on this front end where, you know, a decision would be made, everything would get brought back to you. And we would look at, um, yeah, just kind of the information and we'd present basically, you know, the Mr. Mayor would love this, it'll be a spreadsheet of information. And, you know, it would be coming. Charts, um, so, but it would be coming for me too, so I'm a big fan of all those too, so, um, but overall. This is what the RFQ would look at for pricing, we would keep everything really similar to what we have. Uh, one, because the black cart body is the cheapest that we can get. Um, once we start pigmenting that, the costs go up pretty quick, um, but in the RFQ, it's like. Uh, manufacturers can give us different options for, you know, what we have here. Um, but otherwise, yeah, everything is gonna be relatively the same, we we like the idea of the black cart body, the blue top. Um, so that's kinda what we're asking for as our base. With these being out for fourteen years now, you know, residents kind of um assimilate this to recycling in Roseville, so. We can keep it easy, um, we have about twelve thousand carts out there right now. And we would look to get basically the same sizes out there that people already have. If the numbers were a lot lower, like for the thirty five gallon, maybe we would try getting everyone that's below that a sixty five gallon to start, but. I mean, it's significant enough where we can get everyone what they already have, and we already have kinda the data where. You know, we know where every cart goes uh for sizing, so, uh, we have the data, we can roll it out like that and. Um, the manufacturer would, yeah, basically manufacture it, uh, deliver it, assemble it, and get it on somebody's driveway. Is that what what the RFQ would have, uh, again, we do the same three sizes and uh these have been. Uh, we haven't any problems with the last time, so we'll keep going with those. Uh, one of the options that we'll have at some point is, you know, we can basically have that in mold label on the side, we can put. Whatever we want on it, um, historically, we have used the Roseville Recycles, those were our eighteen gallon blue bins forever. And, um, so we got a picture of that, just kinda show what it was, so this could be on the side of the cart. Um, otherwise, the Roseville logo, uh, the Roseville logo would would be all white. Um, I couldn't find an all white one though, so you get the red rose still, um, so use your imagination a little bit that it's all all white on the black cart. Um, otherwise, we could go super fancy and use property of Roseville, um, so. It's, uh, hold on, I know, hold on to your hats, but, um, but yeah, it's like, we have the opportunity to put whatever we want on there. Um, so if there's thoughts, you know, it's like more than welcome to share them at any point in time. Um, you know, and obviously after the RFQ, but just something to think about. Um, otherwise, as we do kinda start getting into the the numbers side of things, uh, in working with both. Um, this is what we have is kind of an estimate of about seven hundred and forty four thousand dollars. Uh, they're hoping the number is a little bit high, but if we start high, and this is kinda what we shoot for with our budgeting. Um, if things come in lower, that's great, um, that'll be a little bit easier for us to work through. And one of the other reasons now to kinda really think about carts, if we wanna go that way, is Ramsey County still has their grant. Where they can reimburse us seventy, or seventy five percent, fifty percent of the cost, I know. Um, so we could get about three hundred and seventy two thousand dollars reimbursed to us, once they're out there, once the carts are paid for. And, um, you know, this is a significant savings if we wanna do it. Ramsey County never can guarantee how long this goes, but they do know that it is available, you know, for the next year or so. And so if we wanna take advantage of it, it is here, and if we um don't decide to do carts. Then, you know, the next time we go through the process, we can always look at it again and ask Ramsey County. We will have some kind of a replacement or maintenance cost, obviously these carts get, you know, um. Basically crushed when they get picked up, uh, they get slammed when they, you know, get put down. Um, sometimes we have snow in the winter and they crack in the snow or get hit by a snowplow, you know, things happen.
Not a Roseville snowplow.
Not a Roseville snowplow, no, um, good point, um, but. We will start, you know, having to look at just kind of a, you know, a certain replacement cost every year. Um, again, both kinda recommend seven percent as, you know, what we should look at replacing or at least plan on replacing. Um, we don't expect obviously to have a seven percent replacement cost the first few years as they're brand new. Um, we shouldn't have any issues with them, um, so, you know, we could. Uh, defer some of the maintenance costs, obviously, a few years, that would kinda help us build a little bit of a budget. You know, just in the CIP to be able to um have a budget to replace these. Um, the idea is with the RFP that we, or with the recycling RFP, the citywide, we would actually have whoever gets the contract. To do servicing here would also be managing all of our carts, so it's like Roseville won't have to deliver carts or swap carts, fix carts. Um, store them, and so everything would go through wherever our contractor is for that. Um, which is pretty typical, so this isn't anything new that the contractor would be surprised with. Um, I don't think any of them expect the city to have a room for, you know, a thousand carts sitting around. Um, and, you know, how we deliver them, so, um. But otherwise, we'd be looking at, you know, roughly a thirty seven cent per uh cart cost. You know, that would just kinda be on the utility bill like, like we do with a lot of other things.
And just, can you clarify again, was it the the recycling contractor that does the cart management once we own them? Or is it the manufacturer, I wasn't completely clear on that.
The, the contract that we have with the recycling, um, for the service, who does our citywide recycling?
They would do the management.
Soon as the manufacturer gets them dropped off.
They're done.
Yep, and onto the street, they will leave and then. Yep, and onto the street, they will leave and then whoever, you know, potentially like, you know, are Eureka Recycling, they would then be in charge of managing our carts.
Okay, thank you for clarifying this.
And, this is just the numbers from the last two RFPs, just to give a little bit of a idea. There isn't a lot of great data in this, other than to show you, there is obviously a, a price difference between vendor and city-owned. And, you know, again, kind of the four proposers or four respondents down to the two. But, yeah, there are some pretty big swings in there for, for costs. And then, yeah, you can tell kind of who has the most carts close to Roseville as those numbers start to get really close at the bottom. When you look at the twenty-seventeen prices, when there's only a twenty-seven thousand dollar or thirty thousand dollar difference. But funding these things, so as of right now, in the solid ways recycling, environmental budget, as of this morning, when I went up and talked to Michelle, Ms. Petrack, our finance director, we have a six hundred and sixteen thousand, which she considers our cash balance, once we start looking at our operational reserves. We have about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand roughly by the end of twenty-four. So, if we were looking at the grant covering three hundred and seventy-two thousand, we're really close to having, you know, to breaking even once we, once we can get the funding. We will have to pay the entire cost for the carts upfront, so we would have to do some kind of, you know, inter-loan between this couple of the funds, but we should be able to repay that, you know, as soon as we get the grant, it would go right back into the fund that we borrowed it from. And in twenty, starting in twenty twenty-three, we did have a planned surplus built in there just to kind of help build up this fund a little bit faster in preparation for carts. Since it was a topic that we, we all talked about and thought it was a good idea to start striving towards, so.
You go back one slide from there, I have two slides. Okay, so the annual cost for maintenance is about fifty-two thousand. And right now, our planned surplus is about forty thousand, so we're almost, if we just continued that surplus going forward, that essentially mostly would cover our, our maintenance costs, it sounds like.
Yes.
So, we're, we're not too far away in our numbers from where we would need to be, in other words.
Yeah, and this would be depending, you know, it's like if all of our numbers come up, you know, at the seven hundred and forty-four. Yeah, we could have a little bit more of a buffer in there or residual, but, but yeah, as of right now, it's like the planned surplus and our maintenance costs are very close.
Excellent, okay, thank you, appreciate that.
And the tentative schedule is, we're talking about it tonight. If there, if everyone's in agreement, we can release it on Friday. We do have five manufactured, we have contact information for specific vendors. So, what we do is through Footh, we got that, we would email it directly to them, make sure it gets in the correct person's hands at five. And three of them are handling most of the carts in this area anyway, so it'd be good to get it to them. And then also, we'll, we'll get it posted on our websites and, you know, kind of our typical locations, but the idea would get it out to them, and then May seventeenth, we would have the due date. We'd start cramming numbers and doing a lot of the data analysis. And, yeah, we'd bring it back here in, on June seventeenth roughly to discuss it with you, talk about recommendations, and see where, see where the cart discussion goes. The idea to move this on the front end is, you know, to get your feedback now, and then if this does become a reality, it'll really help with our RFP process for citywide recycling, because if we decide to go carts, we can take off an entire scenario within the actual RFP itself. Kind of streamline that, it'll take out some of the questions, it'll help streamline the contracting a little bit. Ms. Tierney did look at the contract and had some comments, some very well-worded comments, thank you. And one of them was, if we can, you know, if, if it does go the cart route, we can take out, you know, paragraphs within the contract, so. It just kind of helps clean it all up a little bit. And if we decide to go with contractor-owned carts again, we work through that just kind of as we normally have. And if everything goes well, we get everything in line. Having this thing in place prior to us releasing our larger recycling RFP, which will be, you know, August, September of this year, you know, this whole issue will be just, at least we'll have kind of the path forward, so. Because with the recycling RFP, we're looking to do that later September, hopefully get it back October, somewhere in there. And then, because it's like, we'd really like to get the recycling RFP squared away, get a contractor set, so then we can actually have basically our budget set for twenty-five this year. And with kind of the timing of our contract currently ending in June thirtieth of twenty-five, you know, we have, the timeline works out really well, where we can get all this stuff approved and ready by potentially the end of this year, or end of twenty-five. No, it would be the end of this year, because, man, we're already in twenty-four, geez. And, so, yeah, it would work out really well with just kind of the, the entire recycling process here in the city.
And with that, questions, feedback from council members? Councilmember Schron.
I know it's silly, but I think it's still helpful to say in some way, property of Roseville, even though it maybe doesn't need to look like it came from a penitentiary. I think it's still helpful for people to realize that, you know, it's not, I just see people using them for all, all kinds of things, so. I think it's helpful to, at least some way mark them that they belong to the city and that they're, we allow them to use them, but they will eventually not go in the moving van and, and drive across town.
It might be a both-and situation as opposed to an either-or in terms of somewhere at least having that property of Roseville on there, I think that makes sense, yeah.
No, I bet, I mean, I also liked the white logo too, so. The, the newer logo.
We could put property of over the top and have the Roseville.
Well, I mean, it, even just if it's somewhere in, somewhere on there, I think it's helpful for people to know, just people. When they realize it's not their own personal property, people can.
I suppose property of Roseville could even be part of the, the lid printing.
Yep.
Item too, potentially, so.
We could sticker that on.
We may, we can decide how we want to do it.
Yes, the recycling carts are your oysters essentially. Oh, boy.
Questions, feedback from council members, council member Graff.
Well, thanks, this was a good refresher because we had discussed this before, and so tonight, we're basically just giving permission to do the request for proposal or, or to get to collect the numbers, and then once that's in, we're just collecting more information to make a decision.
Yes.
So, I don't think it's very controversial in my, my mind, anyway.
Councilmember Schron.
Yeah, in my mind, I'm thinking more information, the better, so you've already seen what some of the proposals are not having our own carts, and so it'd be interesting to see what the current equation could be in this, so. I think, you know, having that information will, I guess, will give us the opportunity to make a more good choice on which direction we go with this, so thank you.
Just, and one technical question, I noted there was a reference to RFID tags on the, our request for quotes. Is that something that's in the Eureka cards now?
The Eureka cards used to have them, the newest ones that came out with them, they are switching away from them because they basically just, you know, everything's camera now and everything. The RFID, I asked about that too, and I didn't put it on here because we haven't met with them yet, but there's another potential funding source that we can go through that would potentially have some grant funding available through it. We haven't met with them, so I don't have a lot of the information, but as part of their grant requirements, that tag is a requirement of it. So, you know, if we can get, you know, more information, and then finding out that maybe the RFID tags cost more than the additional grant money would be, you know, then we could look at removing it. And, but otherwise, yeah, it's like for the RFQ to get the number now won't hurt us later on, because we could always pull it out. But, yeah, it's like, historically, yeah, we had RFID tags in a lot of the carts.
It is primarily for sort of inventory tracking purposes, it's not like all the carts speak to some central control center as to where they're at at any given point or anything like that.
Right.
Nope. They're not smart, are they?
Yeah, so, yeah, they're all for just.
It's not like the water meters.
Well, that might not be a bad thing.
That would be, yeah, you could have an app to track where your cart is.
It's not on the curb anymore.
On homecoming nights, probably not a bad idea.
Is there a motion from the council to authorize submission of the request for quotes?
Second.
Turned over by councilmember Graff, second by councilmember Schron. Any discussion on the motion, councilmember Graff is the main.
Well, just that I think this really puts us in a better position to negotiate down the road, like as councilmember Schron was saying, you know, when you have that ability, you're going to just have more options, so to me, it's, it's great, thanks.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Schron as the second.
I concur, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes four to zero, and that RFQ is authorized, thank you for your presentation and for your work on this.
Mr. Mayor, we'll make sure we send out this presentation to the council and know that this was in the pack, it's got a lot of good information.
I was gonna request that, actually, because some of those numbers.
Yep, we'll get that out to you tonight or for seeing tomorrow. Well, I don't, I don't know how much of a scramble it was to get some of the financial information, but I had asked for it to, appreciate that, so, thanks. All right, that then brings us to an update on our city's forestry program and EAB work. And with, for that this evening, we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Matt Johnson. Turn over to Manhattan and all to do.
Thank you, Mayor, at least on my side, we try to quit the Johnsons after the Johnsons, just really make it easy on you. I couldn't begin without a bad joke. I am joined by our Park Superintendent, Jim Taylor here. We're here to talk about the, as, as alluded to, the forestry program and provide an update on the Emerald Ashbore program. There's a couple of reasons that we're here today. One, the upcoming Arbor Day is always a good reminder to check in with you all, especially we have so much going on with forestry. And I know that a significant portion of the questions I get from, from you all, when you get kind of one-offs from the residents are, you know, where are we at with the EAB program, I heard about this tree, and so I know you hear about it, and so we wanted to really provide this important update. Additionally, the city was, recently, we did receive our twenty-ninth consecutive Tree City USA designation. And we were also received the Tree City Growth Award, which is less than ten percent of Tree City, USA cities get that award. And that's really for cities that are being, I would say, extra progressive and extra aggressive in reforestation of their, of their cities. So, important things to take a moment and sort of reflect on, but also mostly wanted to make sure you all have updates on what all we, we are doing. So, the first component will be the Emerald, the Emerald Ashbore program, which Jim will talk about. You'll also recall when I was here last April, I mentioned this sort of often the distant idea of, of doing a tree inventory, that our last tree inventory had been done in two thousand and eleven, and we were finding when we went out to attack ash trees, some of them weren't where we thought they were. Or we expected to find an ash and it was an oak, and so we, we knew that we needed to get that done. We did get that done this fall, and so we'll provide some of the, or some of the information that we got from that for you all, and then talk a little bit about what, what we think this means and where we go from here in the forestry program. So, with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Taylor, and he'll talk a little bit about the EAB program.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, the accelerated Emerald Ashbore program is currently on schedule, anticipated for completion in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five. So, what that means is what we had planned was nine hundred and fourteen removals, one thousand one hundred and fifty-two plantings, two hundred and thirty-eight trees, three hundred and ten applications for treatment. As you recall, we kind of changed our program when we started this, decided to keep some of those significant ash, so we're continuing to treat. And then four hundred and fifty private trees, private trees to distribute to the, the community. So, from a removal standpoint, we believe we'll be done with the removal sometime in two thousand and twenty-five, or two thousand and twenty-four here, a little ahead of schedule on the removals. The replacements will go into two thousand and twenty-five, probably spring, and maybe a small leftover in the fall of two thousand and twenty-five to get all the, the plantings in. So, as you see right now, we have a hundred and thirty-two trees, that was as of March first, it's actually significantly less than that now that we're still need to take down. So, we are progressing right along with those removals. So, throughout this process, and we'll talk a little bit more about where we're at with the budget in a sec, a second, but we made a promise to the city council and the Parks and Recreation Commission that we would continue to pursue grant funding as part of this, even though it was funded, we wanted to make sure that we continue to do that. So, to date, we've received three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in grant funding and in-kind support to facilitate the removal of our ash and planting of new trees. So, in two thousand and twenty-two, we got a DNR tree planting grant for fifty thousand dollars. We were able to plant trees with that. In two thousand and twenty-three, we received a preparing for EAB grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, seventy-five thousand that went directly to our EAB program. The other fifty was for that inventory that we'll talk a little bit more about in a second here. We received about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred of in-kind value from our forestry coworkers that we received over the time. We've had an office individual for, on our third, we are applying for our fourth term right now. And then last summer, we did add two other forestry coworkers, that their sole responsibility was to water all these young trees that we have and keep them trimmed and keep them protected from deer and that kind of stuff. In two thousand and twenty-four, here, we did really receive the Minnesota Relief Program grant, that's two hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred. That's a combination of removals and replacements, so we're now in the process, process of expending that money. And then we did apply, as I mentioned, for two thousand and twenty, our forestry coworkers again. And we received them preliminarily, we'll have to bring the contracts through council here in the next couple, next month or so.
So, with that, I want to update on the, I wanted to provide an update here on the budget, a little bit more dollars and cents. And we're always a little gun-shy about bringing the budget when we're still probably twenty-five percent to completion. And, but I do want to highlight where we're at. As, as Jim mentioned, we were able to procure a significant amount of grant funding, and I somewhat inarticulately labeled column two of this slide. We have the planned expenses on your left, which were about one point four million dollars. We anticipate through some internal savings, our actual planned expenses will be one point three nine million dollars. With, but a significant portion of that, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars is grant funding, so that probably should have a minus in front of it to indicate that that's actually net savings to the city, that's three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in grant funds when we were only planning on a hundred and nine thousand. And so, how that actually will yield, because when you apply for these grants, it's not just, here's the money. We were able to use a certain amount for removals and a certain amount for plantings. So, with that, we'll have some sort of, for lack of a better term, leftovers in both the CIP, which was our designated removal money. And that's anticipated to be about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars at this point in the game, that can just go back into the CIP, or rather, never leave the CIP. And then we'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of between ninety-five and a hundred thousand dollars remaining in that tree preservation fund. And as a reminder, that fund is when a development comes in and needs to remove a certain amount of trees, they're assessed a fee, and that had been building for many years prior to this program. And we had intended to spend it down essentially through this program, and we have some, but we'll have about ninety-five to a hundred thousand dollars left of that at the end of the program, as things project right now. And we've got some ideas for usage of that, and we'll talk about that a little bit as we get to the end of the presentation. But that is money that will need to be used for additional trees or reforestation in some way, the way that fund was set up. So, again, we're projecting very positively on the budget. With that, again, Jim was going to talk a little bit more about our tree inventory and share some data on that. This data was collected by Davy Tree Core, who, so we had actual professional folks out there doing the inventory. And as Jim mentioned, this was funded, ended up being funded entirely through grant funding. So, we did have, the last tree inventory was two thousand and eleven, that was done sort of internally, blood, sweat, and tears and interns. And that was very good data at the time, and that really did set the table for the EAB program that was coming. But we found this data really to be very reliable and, and on the right track that we got from Davy. And there's some interesting conclusions we think we can draw, so I'll kick that to Jim.
So, let me, let me kick this off by, when we talk about inventory, what we inventory is, is manicured areas of parks and boulevards. So, not in the forested areas of our parks, so these are in areas we're mowing around, we have mulch around, things like that. And then all our city boulevard trees. So, we had, we found we have ten thousand three hundred and eighty-three active city trees in those areas. We still have somewhere around one thousand nine hundred and sixty available planting spaces that we've identified. Now, we're going to eat up a lot of those through the continuing planting as part of our EAB program. Now, we're gonna eat up a lot of those through the continuing planting as part of our EAB program. But we'll continue to plug trees into those spots even past the, the Emerald Ashbore program that we have going on. We still have a hundred and fifty nine stumps out there. That's mostly because we removed all winter and we did stump grind all winter. So we're catching up on those stumps right now. Interestingly, we have, you know, our, our, our most dense tree is a spruce white pine, but only at eight point six percent. So I think we're doing a much better job of getting diversified in our tree canopy, which was one of our overarching goals in this program, to make sure we don't get ourselves in a situation like this again. You know, we joke around, and I think you've heard this from me before, is, you know, we planted all elm and then Dutch elm came in and wiped them out. We thought, hey, there's this green ash. Let's plant all green ash. And now here's where we are again. So we really want to get to the point where we don't do that again. So I think when you see those low numbers in the top five species, it's really starting to say we're doing a much better job of diversifying our forest. Next one talks a little bit about what condition our trees in. So ninety five percent of Roseville's trees are listed in fair and good condition. So what this did for us is actually give us some marching orders to go out and look at some of these trees. We only had point nine percent or ninety six what Davy found were dead trees. And then two point five percent of two hundred and fifty nine what were labeled as poor trees. Some of those again are some of the ash that are still out there that we're in the process of taking down. But it's giving us an opportunity now, we're going and using this data in real time and going out looking at these trees so we can prioritize, okay, what needs to be removed now, what needs to be on a watch list, where are we at with these? And, and kind of making an action plan for those trees. We are finding some of those poor trees are just, you know, maybe the canopy is a little thin, but they're not in danger of, nothing is evident at this point. We're already through the ninety six dead trees. Nothing's evident. We'll start taking those out as we go. And the poor trees are, are all okay at this point. So what, the other thing, interesting thing we found is more than half of the city of Roseville trees are less than ten, ten inches in, in diameter in what we call DBH. So again, it's saying that we have a young forest out there, a young urban canopy out there from all the plantings that we've done. You have to remember, not only through our, our EAB program, but we went more aggressively planting trees the last five or six years where we planted two hundred trees a year. All those are only an inch big right now. So all those got counted as part of this. And obviously draw that, that five thousand three hundred and ninety three trees down our fifty two percent in that one to ten inch range, because we've been much more aggressive with planting trees. So as you see, it kind of works our way up to a hundred and ninety eight trees or two percent or forty inches or more. And Matt's gonna talk a little bit more about what we're doing with some of those big heritage trees a little later.
Yeah, so I think with that, we have this great data. We're kind of already seeing, it's hard to believe. It seems like just yesterday we were talking about this, this big EAB plan. We're sort of, sort of seeing the other side of that and wondering what does, what does forestry look like after that point? So the first component that we have is the tree inventory allowed us to get all of our trees in the asset management program, Beehive. So the same, same program our public work uses that we use for all of our park assets. And it allows us right now to have a really good snapshot of what forestry looks like in Roseville. And this is sort of a great example, and, and I pulled it at random, but as you look at it, it gives you a great example of how big of a task this is. This is not an area of the city that you would think of as pretty, particularly densely forested. It's Central Park. Here's the amphitheater. Here's the amphitheater. Obviously, here's the bocce ball courts. But you see all those little trees on there. Those are all trees that'll need to be managed, manicured, probably inventoried again at some point. And it gives you an idea of the scope. But having the database up to date, so we can do what Jim talked about and tackle those that have been initially inventoried as a poorer quality tree, get out, find out if there's things that we can do to get them back to a higher quality or have to get them on a schedule for removal. That'll be a really important priority for us. Obviously, we will continue to work through disease and hazard trees. It's a joke I tell in my office that all the staff rolls their eyes at is just because EAB came through, the other trees don't stop dying. And that is true, that we still had close, we had around two hundred trees that were outside of ash that came down for one way, shape or form, whether it's storms, whether it's unhealthy, tree quality, whatever it is. So we're still out there working on those. As I mentioned, assessment of the mitigation of, and mitigation of all those trees with a dead designation, we're already working our way through that. But the biggest thing I want to kind of take away from this is the number one priority for the next couple of years as we move on from EAB has to be tackling those young trees and making sure that we don't lose that investment we've already made. So Jim and his team have been so creative through this for, these forestry corp positions. They even created a sort of a DIY watering tank that they could put in the back of a pickup truck and get out there with a garden hose and water the trees. You've probably seen it going around out there. And that's been really, really important because we have had three consecutive years of absurdly dry weather. And we really didn't anticipate that as we got into EAB. So we know that we've got somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand really new trees out there or will by the end of this program. And so we would be foolish if we went out and started aggressively planting more, 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 more while letting those die. And so we're gonna really prioritize that piece. We are gonna continue EAB grant opportunities as we're able to do that. And there's a couple of ways that we can see that potentially working. We're getting to the end of, again, our public EAB epidemic, as I would say. But we, as Jim mentioned, we still have all of these unforced, unmaintained areas that still have ash, that still will fall. Right now, as we've always sort of managed our forestry, if they fall, they become habitat. But in some areas, these are pretty dense. And if you have a bunch of just dead trees laying there, that's something to be considered of what the implications are of that. Is there fire hazards? Are there things like that? And so we've heard some other communities are sort of tackling that, and that's something we can look to. Initially, or additionally, there are some communities that are starting to kind of kick the tires on whether this grant funding could be used on the private side. That's a real heavy lift as far as how do you administer it? How can the funds be used? So that's very exploratory, but we do want to assure you that we are gonna continue to pursue EAB funds even as we're able to. And then the other pieces, we do have still that about two hundred and fifty trees that we will be treating for the foreseeable future as well. And right now, there may be EAB grant opportunities with that as well. We're gonna keep our eyes open. So. And then I guess the last piece of kind of the pressing immediate forest need is our, many of you know Anita Torski, our longtime, twenty nine years as our part-time forester, is retiring. She's gonna be retiring here in April. So Anita, for many, is forestry here in Roseville. We tried to encourage her to come here tonight, but she's not much for, for a, for a council meeting. But, and the part-time position was really one that worked very well for Anita. She has a master's degree. She's absurdly qualified for that position. And as Anita moves on, really looking at what to do with that position as we look at the evolution of forestry being more intentional and aggressive. So through the budget process, we're not asking for action tonight in any way, shape or form. We are considering transitioning what is now a part-time forestry position to a full-time position that would incorporate both forestry. And then another thing, you've heard me talk a lot about natural resources as we continue with our natural resources plan. Right now, in a lot of ways, Jim is a one-man show for both of those. You know, obviously, as Anita is the part-time forestry, but natural resources, Jim is wearing that hat. And we're getting great results as it is, but we feel with correctly staffing that really both those programs can even continue to rise more. So you'll hear more down the line. Pat will surely hear more as we work through the budget process. But just that, that's something we're thinking about as we do hear about Anita moving on. And if you don't see that position posted immediately when she retires, that's the reason.
Just briefly, can you talk about sort of how you're gonna, how you're looking to fill that role in the interim time?
Yeah, Jim, do you want to address that?
Other than just Jim doing everything?
That was the plan. It's a great question.
So we, we have our current forestry corp person through the end of August. And he's, he's been well trained by both Anita and myself to be able to pick up some of those, you know, doing the work orders, part of our disease and hazard program, some of the, I do most of the communication with Tree Trust right now on the EAB program. So we'll, we'll use a combination of, you know, myself a little more and then our forestry corp worker to, to kind of step up some of that, those work orders and doing tree inspections. And he's been well trained on that. And then we are hoping to have another one on by the time they leave. Now, there'll be a learning curve for that new person. They generally come in here and they're not forestry people by trade. But I think we can teach them to do the things we need to, to keep the program moving in the interim. But it, it'll be, there'll be some challenges along the way.
And I think the other opportunity that we had talked about is potentially pursuing some higher-paid seasonal staff that maybe had worked with us in the past that might have some of that training to augment some of what Anita can take on right now. So certainly that will be a challenge. But again, we're, we think it's important that this position is looked at. And we would hate to go out and just hire it as is and potentially miss this opportunity to at least have that conversation and really review what's the best path going forward for the city. So again, we don't want to miss that window at this point and sort of be stuck just because we hired quickly. So. All right. And then last is talking a little bit about what we look at for our long-term plantings, our long-term plan, excuse me. So once again, we stabilize those young trees. As Jim mentioned, we do have a couple thousand planting spots that are identified as available planting locations. And we could sort of resume planting those. Some of those have challenges because some of those are right of way in front of folks' houses that may not want a tree. So although we say we have two thousand planting spots, probably not all of those are plantable. But once we stabilize, we want to move in that direction. Another thought that we had that, that has become increasingly appealing is utilizing some of those tree preservation dollars to repopulate private trees. So as we've talked about, ash don't only fall on public property. And we've had a tremendous amount of luck through Tree Trust with two private tree sales and then which trees are sold at a deeply discounted rate. We sold a hundred and fifty at each of the two that we ran, and they went really fast. They were very popular, really well received by residents. And then additionally, Tree Trust helped us to find grant funding for a lottery to give away some free trees. I think there was three hundred in that. And those, those all went as well. So there's an appetite in the community that perhaps there wasn't twenty years ago for private trees at an affordable price. And that obviously serves the same goal of enlarging our tree canopy, but it doesn't put the long-term maintenance and responsibility for those trees on the city. So as we look at these kind of tree preservation funds that really are intended to improve our tree canopy within the city, that could be an avenue to pursue. Once we come out of EAB, would we continue doing a tree sale or working with somebody that can provide that service to us and give our residents trees at a discounted rate? As I mentioned, we, we, we at some point will have to have conversations about particularly dense areas of ash and in the non-manicured spaces. And we're not ready to have that conversation right now. We see tremendous value in the habitat that comes from down trees. And we don't, certainly don't want to be in the business of maintaining every area that has a tree. But there might need to be some conversations on that. And then finally, if you look to kind of the right side of the screen, and I will, this is the caveat, this comes from Davy. So take it with a little bit of a grain of salt. They certainly have a financial interest. But this is a graphic that they provided us when we began our inventory that we thought was pretty instructive on sort of the best practice. And this is pretty consistent with industry best practice for forestry planning. And you can see if you work through the spectrum, that begins with Tree City USA, which Roseville's been for a long time. Dedicated commitment, we've, we've certainly had tree inventory, which we just conducted, funded program, which again, I think we've shown a strong supportive funded program. And then really, it's an updated kind of forestry master plan would be the next step. So we have a street tree plan that sort of refers to this species should go on this street. But we haven't really laid out in a professional way, you know, what are the next steps? What does ten years down the line look like in forestry, particularly as we look at issues like climate change? Should we be planting more trees that traditionally have been a little further south and potential drought? And how do we, how are those impacts on our urban forests? So we don't, I think as staff, have the bandwidth to do that immediately, and we certainly want to get through EAB. But it is something that we want to continue and likely something we'll continue to talk about in the future as we look towards a little bit more of a progressive approach with forestry and not just responding to a report of a downed tree or something like that. So with that, that is the update we had. We'll open up the floor for any questions or feedback council might have on what we're doing.
Thank you, council. Questions, feedback, Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes, I have two questions. One, what's the difference between a fair tree and a good tree?
There are excellent trees.
I mean, that's a big, yeah.
Yep. So fair would mean it has some canopy loss, or maybe it's lost some limbs over time, so it's not perfectly symmetrical as you'd think of a tree. And then, you know, the good trees would be good canopy, proper structure to it, leafing out well.
So a fair tree wouldn't have any kind of disease or anything like that?
It just might mean it's not, it, it, there's been some, there's some issue with it. We've lost some limbs over time from either storm damage or what it might be.
Okay, I was just curious. And then with the EAB, have you had cooperation from the private side when, when they, when there's infected trees on private land? How's, how has that interaction been?
So we do get calls quite regularly, a lot of times from residents with a neighbor that has a tree that they're worried is gonna fall in their garage or their house or whatever it might be. So we have a, a pretty laid out detailed process on how we handle those. We first encourage the neighbors to have a discussion and, and, and encourage them to remove the hazard tree if it is indeed a hazard. If that doesn't work, we do send a letter from the forestry side of things, just stating what the ordinance says. And if there's a disease or hazard tree in, in their private property, they're required to take it down. Now, I don't have enforcement teeth behind that. That's when community development comes in. So the third step then is community development sends a letter and says you have X amount of days to remove it.
Does that happen very often?
It doesn't. It doesn't. I, I think, and I've been here seven years now, I think one time we had to actually, because the fourth step is we take it down and abate the property. And I think it's happened once in my seven years here that we had to do that. Generally speaking, ninety percent of the time, then the neighbors having a discussion yields progress and, and mitigation of that tree. But on occasion, we've had to send the letter and on occasion, community development's had to send a little more stern letter saying it needs to be removed. But, but that's generally the process when we hear things.
Right, because it's really obviously important that those trees get taken out as well. So, all right, thank you.
Your questions, feedback, Councilmember Strawn?
Are we planning a twenty twenty four tree sale?
Yes, this year will be in the fall for a couple of reasons. One, we're planting a lot of trees this spring, so we're busy and we're kind of stretching our, we're gonna stretch our volunteers kind of thin, getting those done. To stock, because we're planting so many trees in the spring, Tree Trust didn't have the stock till the fall to do the tree sale. But we will be doing one in the fall.
Do see some rumbles on Facebook and such about people asking.
We've gotten quite a few questions.
Do you do something nice and?
Right.
You'll want it again.
It gets demanding.
Councilmember Graff?
Well, kudos on the grants. That was really impressive. I, I'm pleased with that, obviously. Question on the trees falling like in reservoir woods, for example. How do we handle that? I mean, I understand the habitat side. I think that's great, but some of them could be in dangerous spots like near pathways or things like that.
Yep. So we, we've started to use some of our third Saturday events and things to clean up some areas adjacent to trails. We just did one at Langton Lake Park a couple, two months ago. So as Matt mentioned, our, our general process has been if it falls in a wooded area, we leave it. But we're starting to see some of these areas like reservoir woods, some areas of Villa, some areas of Central Park, Langton Lake, that years of that happening now is creating kind of a, what can be considered a ratty mess in there and things like that. So reservoir is on our list to clean up some areas adjacent to trails. There's a couple areas there like that. We certainly, if there's a hazard, even if it's by a trail and we know about it, we'll go get that tree on the ground. We would never leave it just because it's in a wooded area. So we get those reports from residents either through the, the online tickets or people calling. And then we send out either my crew, if it's something we can handle internally, or we'll send out our, our disease and hazard contract, which is precision landscape of tree right now, to get, at least get that tree on the ground and make sure it's not a hazard.
Okay, thanks, yeah. And then I, I like the diversification side, obviously, because having lived through the disease and all those streets with the arching elms that all disappeared, like a tornado. Well, some of tornadoes have gone through too, but.
So and one other thing I, I wanted to mention, you know, we get, a lot of times we get, how are we taking care of some of these trees that we currently have out there? So we have started to take some steps. If you look at some of our beautiful oaks that are at Acorn Park or the beautiful oaks that are at Autumn Grove Park, we've really started to increase mulch beds around those, those trees to make sure that we don't have foot traffic on the red system. We're not mowing over the red system. We're doing root stabilizer injections into those trees right now. So it isn't just taking down a dead tree and replacing. So it isn't just taking down a dead tree and replacing where we can. We're really trying to be more progressive in taking care of some of those heritage trees that we care a lot about, that are very important, that are fifty to a hundred years old in our system as well.
And also removing diseased branches or things like that, if there's oak wilt or something. Thanks.
And I would, not so much a question, but feedback, I think it makes sense to, to look at ways to use the, the tree replacement funds for those private properties, because I think as we envisioned that initially, it was something that, you know, clearly if a particular development is not able to put all their trees that they have to replace on their own property, we need other, we need a way to get trees on other places, and so the funding, you know, the fee and the funding mechanism is there. But I think we always did kind of wonder, okay, where are these trees gonna go? So I think it, it just is, it seems to be a natural outgrowth of that to, to look at a program to be able to help support trees on private property as well. And I think it seems like this last year with Emerald Ashbore, a lot more private property trees have started to really, really show signs of trouble. And I think people are, people are sort of realizing what they've got and they have to deal with. And so I think that, that, that is not going to, you know, that's a little behind, because we've been proactive. I think there's, you know, a lot of folks that just don't even know they have an ash tree on their property until it starts to try to fall down on them. So, you know, I, I think I would be supportive definitely of looking at ways to use those, those funds to, to help support trees on private property and, you know, whatever form that takes. The other thing is, it's nice, because it's, you know, it's not like development activity stops and that fund is, is fixed. I mean, we're continuing to have, you know, not as much development activity certainly as a few years ago, but still funding is coming into that, so that's not a, it's something that will continue to be available for those types of purposes. So I think that, that was, that was good that we set it up that way, and I think we, we should be creative in how we, how we use it to, to get more trees in our, in our city. And of course, we're working very hard to make sure that our, our butternut tree, our, our record butternut tree in Roseville is, is always coddled and gets all the TLC that it is. Right, oh, and just in terms of the safety of trees on pathways, I imagine paved pathways are one thing, but we certainly have, you know, trails through woods that are more or less city-designated trails as well. We're watching those as well.
Absolutely.
Great, other questions, feedback? All right, well, I think it all sounds, sounds good, we look forward to the discussions through the budget process. And the only other thing I'll note is that we should continue to look at areas in our park system where we might be able to take advantage of looking at the lesser maintenance native plantings instead of maintained turf, just as an example, on, on boulevards along streets where it's not part of a field, it's not probably an active play area, those might be areas to, where we can get away from having, having maintained turf just for all the benefits that, that native plantings would provide. So I just always, always have to take the opportunity to encourage us to do that wherever possible. Councilmember Schröder?
Related but not, a coming up soon is May, and so just the whole less mow, mow less, whatever may. Interesting, my, my daughter, as a Cornell Extension botanist, is doing a paper on less mow May, and so there are some contentious pieces of what that all means. But I think anytime we are able to have less interference, generally, you know, less pollutants into the air every time that electric or that gas mower has to go out, you know, whatever. But, you know, I think just as people are excited to have their flowers out, making sure that they aren't getting too, too cultivated and stuff, and kind of give things a chance to, to its natural thing first.
All right, thank you, everyone, thanks for the report, thanks for all the good work on trees. And like I said, look forward to more, 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 more woody discussions. Trying to think of a pun to use there, but I think I failed. All right, with that, I think the only other item we've got tonight is future agenda review, Mr. Trujan.
Yes, let's just move down here. So our next meeting is next Monday, the twenty-second. We do have another presentation about a road project, the, future road project at least, Men dot Highway thirty-six multimodal study presentation, this is still in the study phase of it. I think they wanna come back and talk about some of the feedback they have gotten. We also consider approval of Rosedale Police Officer's Contract, something that we talked a little bit. Maybe I talked to you individually in the past year. This would be Rosedale paying for two police officers and equipment and vehicles to help being located out at Rosedale. We also wanna have a presentation from the Association of Nonsmokers in Minnesota about smoke-free housing presentation. They have a wealth of information about a variety of things the city can do, ranging from education up to actual ordinances about prohibiting smoking in multifamily units. So it's just a conversation, we're not looking for any action that night. Also want to talk about the strategic planning, we need an RFP, but also maybe officially adopt the community aspirations from the envisioned Roseville. We've received them, but as we look back, notice that we haven't really officially adopted them. So we should probably do that, 'cause that's gonna be a cornerstone of the strategic planning process. And then also talk about the Kids in Need Foundation bonding request, something that I've communicated with the council before, and I wanted to get that in front of the council for some consideration. Kids in Need Foundation will be here and present and just talk about what the project is about and then what that would mean for the city if we were to be involved as part of the bonding request. On May sixth, we don't have a terribly big agenda, although we have some items that are important. We wanna present the final financial audit. We also wanna revisit the twenty twenty-four budget process calendar, mostly just to talk about some of the conversation we had in January about how the budget's presented and the charts and other information. Just kind of double back on that as we about to embark into the next budgeting process. And then unfortunately, we do have five violations of liquor license violations that we'll, you've all been through before, but we'll need to have all five of them show up and consider the presumptive penalties for each of those things, each of those entities. I know we have a couple repeat violators in this, this batch. On the thirteenth, we have a quick, somewhat quick EDA meeting. We wanna discuss updating the housing study. Community Development Director Janice Gunlock has been talking about updating that study and looking at some different things, so we wanna talk about that. And then really spend the bulk of the evening talking about the HRIC purpose, scope, and role, something that we talked about, I think, last meeting and move it to this meeting here for a deeper discussion. That'll be facilitated discussion, we're not intending to have any other items on there, we just wanna make sure we spend the appropriate amount of time. And then on the twentieth, we'll have the Alt Department Equity Update as well as Fire Department Staffing Review Conversation. I know Chief Brosnan has reached out to, to all of you to have some one-on-one conversations if you're interested, and I think some of you have taken that up. So this is just a conversation again about what, where we are now, where we see, we need to maybe be going in future years. So that's a lot, but that's the next few meetings.
Any questions or feedback on the, the upcoming agendas? Councilmember initiated items for future agendas, any reports, announcements, communications?
Just reiterating, May eighth, NYFS Annual Luncheon, eleven thirty. It'll be at the Badness Heights Commons this year rather than where it used to be at Midland. We're trying to be more in the center of what the service area for NYFS, so.
Sure.
I'll take me or anyone here about it.
It's a larger venue too, so more people can come.
So we're hoping, yes.
Board of Ventura Cities Annual Meeting is here at the Oval next week.
That's right. And I wanna thank staff for following up on our discussion at our last meeting about those two pieces of legislation, getting letters out, we probably all got copied on that. They all went out to the various legislators on the Missing Middle Housing slash Multifamily Legislature Overregulating Cities Bill, and then also the county's EDA legislation. So appreciate staff following up on that and getting those out. And as was noted, we'll have the discussion at that upcoming meeting about the Kids in Need Bonding Request. And I think that's all I've got. If there's no other business before the council, the only other item on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved, yeah.
I move the Councilmember Schröder second by Councilmember Schröder. No discussion on a motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at seven thirty-eight P M. Thank you, everyone.